All right, it's 6:30. I'll call the meeting to order. Let's stand up for the Ledge of Allegiance.
Ledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, are there any additions to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, Acting Mayor, like to add one addition to the agenda under 8A, and that would be determining the method of appointment to the City Council for the vacancy.
All right, with that addition, is there any other changes?
No changes other than that.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes 3-0. All right, public comment. I'm gonna open up public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the council, please do so at this time. All right, seen none, we'll close public comments. Consent agenda, is there anything that needs to be polled or reviewed on the consent agenda? All right, well then I look for a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All right, any other further questions? Seen none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes 3-0. All right, we'll move on to the business items. Number eight, it's the consideration adoption of resolution declaring a vacancy on City Council. Okay, so we did receive a letter from Derek Ely, and he is going to, he has put in his resignation effective February 21st. He has written a little letter. "After serving as a council member for mayor for the past year, I am resigning from this, from my position as a council member due to my family's decision to move outside of the city limits. I am grateful for the opportunity to have served the city and its residents during my time on council. I have truly valued being part of such an important role in shaping policies and decisions that impact our community. I want to thank my fellow council members, the mayor, city staff, and mayor residents for their support and collaboration during my time in office. It's been an honor to serve alongside such dedicated individuals and work towards improving our community. Thank you again for entrusting me with this responsibility, and I wish the city of mayor the best in the, in future endeavors. Sincerely, Derek Ely." I just wanna add, actually, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution declaring this vacancy.
Motion.
Second.
All right, is, any other questions or concerns? All right, seen none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, approved, passes 3-0. I'd just like to add that I really appreciate Derek's service and wish him well moving outside of mayor. And then we'll move on to 8A appointment methods.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. So, when it comes to the appointment to City Council, when there's vacancy on the council, it is up to the council to determine the method and who gets appointed. That, there's no preset state law process, there's nothing that says you have to do it one way or another, it's really at the discretion of the City Council. But typically what you see is unless you have somebody that you really want to have appointed, right then and there, as we had Peggy's instance, with Larry's passing, because you had just been on and it was the obvious choice. Now, this one, we don't quite have that. So, what councils will usually do is we'll advertise that the seat is open, we'll take names, candidates, if anybody wants to put anybody up for that, and then we can do interviews of people, and then, once council has selected the person they want, just make that appointment by motion. So, my recommendation would be to go through that process. I would like to see if we couldn't have things lined up for the April 8th meeting to have a decision on that, if we get that far, first or second one in April, just because the next couple of council meetings, we're gonna have somebody gone, gone in some form or fashion, so that'll give us time to really get names together on that. So that would be my recommendation, is to approve, putting it out for candidacy and nominations.
Right, anyone would like to make that motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any further questions?
So Nick, where do you advertise that?
Put it in the newspaper, put it on our social media, put it on our website.
Okay, perfect. To lots of places.
Yeah.
So people know.
Yeah.
We need, sorry, we need some competition for when Don here puts his.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, passes 3-0. All right, moving on to number nine, consider approval of hot air balloon permit for Sky High Art.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. So now that we have the ordinance in place, we're now able to take permit applications for hot air balloons in city parks, and of course, the Markerts did put them in. I was hoping they'd be able to join us, but they couldn't make it, it seems. So they put in, and they were looking at three primary locations as part of this. One, they had selected here in Old Schoolhouse Park, and this is what they submitted, however, this includes part, well, a good chunk of Zion Lutheran's land. And in my conversations with the Markerts, I said, "Well, probably not a bad idea on the city's property, it's probably a really good location right off of Blue Jay, but they're gonna need to get Zion Lutheran's permission if we're going to allow this sort of thing." So I did forward it on to Zion Lutheran, and they're going through their processes on whether or not they're gonna want to allow it or not. So I hope to hear back from them not too distant future. The primary place they really wanted to go out of was their original location here at West Ridge Park. And they would come in off the alley, they would access it through the south side here, come into this open space, and this is where they would set up and take off from. And this is the one they said until they get permissions from the other two, one from Zion and the other from, we'll see here, this will be the one that they would primarily use right now. The third location was in Meadow Park, on the east side, south of the playground equipment. And this one, similar to Zion, I said, you know, Meadow Park wouldn't be a bad location, right, they were proposing, but how are you gonna get in? And I, they had asked if they could drive down the trail, and I said, "Well, that's really for city vehicles only, we don't want more vehicles on that, and it's absolutely necessary." And I said, "Your best bet is going to be getting permission from one of the adjacent property owners if they could traverse their property to get into the park area." So they were gonna work on that as well. So, otherwise, the permit looks to be in good order. I would say approve the permit for the three locations, Old Schoolhouse Park, where they designated, West Ridge Park, and Meadow Park, but West Rid, or I'm sorry, Old Schoolhouse and Meadow Park conditioned upon getting adjacent property owner approval.
And that's only on the Old Schoolhouse Park. They could do it as long as they stayed on the city property, but most of their plan is Zion's.
Yeah, right here is the rough boundary line, so this part is city, this part is Zion's.
Okay.
Conditioned upon Zion approval.
Yep, makes sense.
Conditions they might have.
Thank you. My, my concern is just if, if it's really wet, or we've had a lot of rain, I would assume they would take that into consideration on launching in that, especially even at West Ridge, just having to drive on the grass.
Yes, in my conversations with the Markerts, I did bring up, during this time of year especially, it's very soft out there, and if they're gonna launch, we don't want ruts forming in any of our parks. And their response was, whenever we launch, we're always very respectful of the conditions that are there, and we try to leave as minimal impact as possible.
Yeah, I know, we talked about that when they were first here, right, because they will be driving their truck, the balloon gets tethered to the truck, so the truck is gonna be on the grass and
Yep.
all of that, so.
Yep.
So I think we could probably, see, give them that benefit of the doubt and see how they do treat our property in this.
If we have issues, then we just address them if we need to.
Yep.
All right, well then I'll look for a motion to approve the hot air balloon permit for Sky High Art.
Motion.
Second.
Any other further discussion? All right, seen none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 3-0. All right, moving on to business item number 10, approval of conditional offer of employment to Alicia Menzel for the city clerk position.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. So over the course of the last handful of weeks here, we received 22 applications for the city clerk position. We decided to interview five applicants, and of the five, Personnel Committee did the interview, so was myself, Nikki and the mayor, deliberated and came to council with the following recommendations. We selected Alicia Menzel for her vast amount of previous experience in deputy clerk positions and similar roles. We're looking to offer her a rate of $30 per hour, you can see the range on there, but since she has 15, 20 years of experience, we felt this was appropriate. And if hired, her first day would be Monday, March 18th. This was reviewed by the Personnel Committee, and this is their recommendation coming up.
I have really not much to add, but yeah, she was our top candidate, and we're really excited for her to start. So I'm looking for approval of conditional offer of employment to Alicia Menzel for the city clerk position, starting on 3/18.
Motion.
Second.
Any further questions?
Yeah, so I just wanna state for the record that I am related to Alicia. I was not a part of the interview or the hiring process, I will be making my decision based on the recommendation from the Personnel Committee.
Thank you, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes 3-0. All right, number 11, consider approval of purchase replacement pump for wastewater treatment facility.
What'd you do, Kyle?
You're up, Kyle.
The past couple of weeks, we had our annual pump inspections at the wastewater treatment pit, or lift stations, it's something we do every year. And one pump that we found was locked up, we had an issue with it, so we were kinda waiting for it, so it had, we hadn't been running it, because we were waiting for the inspection to come up, because it was only a couple of weeks away. We do have one other pump that serves the, kinda the same purpose, but, so the pump we're looking at replacing is the RAS pump, the return activated sludge pumps. One of the return activated sludge pumps. It runs 24/7 between the two pumps, so we alternate the pumps on a monthly basis. This pump was purchased and installed in 2015, and it has about, I calculated it out, about 40,000 hours of runtime on it. So, it's had a good life and a good, a good, yeah, a good life, I guess. So, it's kinda run its course, so it's time to replace it, and the total cost to replace it comes to $9,700. Could get repaired, but typically with that type of repair, it doesn't last nearly as long, and it won't be as reliable, so staff was recommending that we just replace it.
All right, I look for approval to purchase the replacement pump.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes 3-0. Moving on to number 12, consider adoption of resolution for submitting an application to the Carver County Community Development Agency Community Growth Partnership Initiative Grant Program for the Old Creamery Project.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. You almost said that in one breath.
I know, that was a mouthful.
It was, it was kind of a run-on.
So this is the resolution that is required for us to pass or adopt in order to submit a grant application to the Community Development Agency's Growth Partnership Initiative Grant Program. This would be on behalf of Nick Flasek and his Old Creamery Project for the re-roof portion of his project. Similarly, as we did with Brad Quas, we're getting the grant application finalized with Brad Quas, we didn't have it final when we brought the application before before council, so in this way, we're treating it no differently. Nick is getting me the information to complete the application, which is due early next week, and we anticipate we'll have that ready to go.
All right, so I look for a motion to adopt the resolution to have Nick submit the grant paperwork, I'm not gonna reread the whole grant program.
Motion.
Second.
Any further questions?
And so the motion is really just giving Nick permission to write the grant and submit it on behalf of
Yes.
the project, okay.
Exactly what we did with Brad Quas.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes 3-0. All right, moving on to City Council reports, Peggy, do you have anything?
I do not.
Chad?
I've had no meetings.
And I just had the personnel interviews, which we discussed earlier. Look for motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 3-0, we are adjourned, and we will move on to the work session.
How do we like, take their leave at this time? They certainly can, otherwise, welcome to stay. Yeah. Nope, I just, I give anybody the opportunity as we're just in between here. So, rolling right along into the workshop, two items we'll be discussing tonight, sidewalk and trail project discussion with Bolton and Mink, and then we'll be talking about the public safety funding for the fire department's fall rescue. So with us, we have Aaron and Philip from Bolton and Mink, will be kicking off
Ooh, they brought us artwork.
A PowerPoint and some website stuff, it's oughta be for the kinda money we're paying for this.
Oh, boy. That'll be a blessing.
All right, good evening. I've met some of you before, but for those that haven't, my name's Aaron Bartling, and I'm a senior planner with Bolton and Mink. And I've been working with Nick here, and then Dave Martini and Philip as well, on trail and sidewalk implementation plans, so we're here tonight just to kinda provide an update on where we're at with that process, and confirm some things that we've been putting together to keep it going on to the next step, so. Next slide. So, what we'll be touching on, first is starting with the project overview and some of the goals that we'll be looking at, and then really just leading a discussion on priorities for this effort, including looking at replacement areas, where there's existing gaps in the system that we wanna prioritize, and then touch on the asphalt versus concrete approach, and then a little bit on the assessment policy as well, and then wrap up with our plan for the community engagement portion of this plan. So really, the two goals for today are just confirming what the priorities are for trails and sidewalks in the community, and then confirming that community engagement approach as well. So, project overview, so our scope is to develop the trails and sidewalks implementation plan, prioritizing projects and identifying a funding strategy to guide and assist the city with implementation, right? So I laid out a few of the key steps up there, starting with data collection and analysis, we've done a lot of that work, including an initial kickoff discussion with kind of a subcommittee here, getting some feedback and good understanding of those initial priorities that I'll be discussing through today. And then we're really at that, starting to kick off that community and stakeholder engagement piece, which is starting with this workshop here, and getting some feedback on how to move forward with that. And in the meantime, we just submitted a Safe Routes to School Planning Assistant Grant Application through MINDOT, that was submitted by Nick last Wednesday, I think it was, to continue some efforts that are more focused on safe routes to schools, so including the two schools here in the community. And then hopefully that would lead to some assistance on future planning efforts to make the city eligible for implementation grants through MINDOT. And then we'll get into preliminary cost estimates and the implementation and funding plan, once we get the community feedback and have a good understanding of what the priorities are. Next slide. So just touching on goals, there's really three of them that I kinda mentioned already, but first one being identifying and prioritizing the replacement areas, and then the second one, prioritizing those gaps, and then third, really getting a good understanding of the community's preference on what treatments are used for these trails and sidewalks to the asphalt versus concrete conversation. Next slide. So, here, this matches the map that I handed out as well, and then we also have kind of an interactive map feature, Nick, if you wanna pull that up, that will help guide some of our discussion here. So, there's a few main things I wanna point out with this map. This is what we're using to look at what those replacement areas are, what the, where the, and where the gaps are, so two main points, really. So I'll kinda touch on each of those that we've identified so far, and then we can open it up for some discussion too, like, is there anything missing, did we get it wrong on some of this, that sort of thing, but really just looking to get feedback on this specifically, so. The first, we'll start with the replacement areas, which really focused on those 20-year-old asphalt sections through the Coldwater Crossing and Hitting Creek neighborhoods, that you can see highlighted by that kinda boulder light yellow color on the maps. So starting with the Coldwater Crossing, this is an existing segment, right, that is around 4,400 feet long altogether, and then moving south across Highway 30 there into Hitting Creek, there's a few different roadways with these 20-year-old segments that we'd be looking to prioritize for replacement, and that section is about 5,700 feet total, so. Looking at replacement areas in general, that's around 10,200 square, or not square feet, feet in length for replacement of all the areas that you see kinda highlighted in yellow there. Any initial thoughts before I switch over to talking about the gaps that we've identified?
No, because we, we're looking at either asphalt or cement, right, those were our two options, and just walking through, like, the differences and because I think all the replacement are all asphalt right now, correct?
Yes, yep, they're all asphalt, and we'll touch on that piece too, we have a slide that kinda talks about the benefits of each type, and that, we'll kinda feed into the implementation plan too, and how we approach some of these, because there's different costs for different types, yeah.
Only thing I would say is, like, I walked yesterday in Meadow Park, and that trail system, there was some rough spots in there.
Through the park?
Yeah, through the park, so I don't, I know it says it's not necessarily replacement sections, but I would say that I know part of Old Schoolhouse Park was replaced, correct, Kyle? We did some, and I think Ridge, like Ridge, West Ridge is also had some, when we redid that, add that parking spot.
Yeah.
But I, we never, we have not touched Meadow. So I would say that would probably need to be added.
Was this part of the, were we leaving trails in it, Nick, or were we leaving trails out?
I don't know if we got far enough in the discussions about inside the parks themselves, I know West Ridge could use a redo.
West Ridge could use a redo, and then I know exactly where Nikki's talking to in Meadow.
Yep. So I was just saying, if we're
I wasn't sure if that was part of this grant application, or if this was mainly just the sidewalk.
I thought it was just the sidewalks.
Okay, I don't know, but I was, can you always add things to projects outside, you know, like?
It says it's sidewalk and trail. So.
Or did I just, did I just confuse everybody?
From my perspective, I would say that, yes, if that's a priority that we wanna identify, I would say let's do it, but I think it's up to you all on how we wanna move forward with this too, if, within
I'm looking at a scale, like, if we're coming in and replacing, I don't necessarily think those trails would be cement, but like, is there some economies of scale if you have a contractor already in, but if everything's moving to concrete, then we're in a different scenario. I think it all depends on what we choose. If it's all gonna be asphalt replacing, then you include the trail system. Correct? Because that would just be economies of scale of the cost of the, it'd be cheaper to have them add it to that So if we can just make a note that that, that would be part, depending on where we go with the type of
I wouldn't say all of it needed to get replaced, but I know the chunk going up the hill is
Yeah, I, yeah, I haven't walked
It goes from eight feet to four feet, because
Yeah.
I would like that replaced too, so, and then also in West Ridge, pretty much all of it except the portion did already needs to get fixed, so.
So do you wanna specify a portion of Meadow? We'll take it in two parts here. And then the rest of it is fine, for now at least.
Is there a laser pointer?
Sit down.
Could've thrown it. Andy would've caught it for me. All right, this little chunk right here, and then it loops up and gets connected in kinda with this driveway, but pretty much all the way is, and it kinda, it goes from eight feet wide, which is nice for plowing and everything, and then it gets down to about six feet, almost four feet, and it kinda loops up and goes around the corner.
And there's some failure of the
There's failure right here.
Why is it so narrow?
I don't know why it went narrow, it's been that way forever, and it's
So can we address that as doing this to match it to
I would like it to match, correct? But that, that's the main chunk. Most of this trail looks, I think, actually fairly decent, if I remember right.
Right, but I'm just saying, like, we wanna, I think you should just look at it
Yep.
as a whole.
And then if you wanna scroll over to West Ridge, Nick. Yeah, pretty much, it stops right about here where they did the parking lot, and yeah, all, for sure in here.
Yep.
And pretty much, if you're doing all of that, you might as well fix this up. This part actually going to the road here, I don't think I remember seeing any major defects, but otherwise, Old Schoolhouse should all get fixed up when the Splash Pad project happens. There was a, there's a couple other random areas up in Discovery. But I don't know if that'd be more of just a hatch here and there, not like a, I don't think it's a large enough section to add to the grant.
Yeah, I don't walk up there, so. I have to, I'll start.
Yeah, you gotta walk
Part of this committee, I'll
I know exactly
Do Dolgensen walk all of them.
So, if you wanna go to Discovery, Nick, I can show
Real, real quick on this one, it's a future thing we can tack real quick, but do we want to relay in the same place, or do we wanna look at the where the trail is in West Ridge?
Right, so we can move it or adjust it, I don't know if we like the circle here, we can
You can move it south.
Get it a little further north, right, kinda along the property line?
No, 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 no. Southerly.
But yeah, no, that's all an option, or you can even have, you know, something else coming in.
Yeah, because we've taught, yeah, that, there is a part in, on this map for adding from the trailhead.
Right, and I think that kinda cuts through this way, or unless it goes this way.
Nope, it goes on that side.
Okay, yeah, this is going on the other side then.
Right.
Okay, I've seen two models, I saw one going this way and one going that way, so.
I think that's for, that, that is further discussion, exactly where we would want it, and how we'd want that part to be laid out.
You wanna go up to Discovery?
Yeah, Discovery, I know we're all Discovery, we've got these lovely boulevard trees here that are starting to wreak havoc on our trail, and then also a little section kinda right here. Otherwise, I think most of this is all good, and we did a lot of work to these trails through the development a couple of years ago, so those are in pretty good shape right now too.
But now we have a big chunk, so like, even if we kept it asphalt, even bidding that out for that section
My recommendation would be to leave it asphalt in the parks, and that our trails are asphalt and make our sidewalks concrete, but that's
Right, but it looks like we have enough asphalt too, to even get a quote on that and still do, just then do them all, even if we and include Discovery is, would be my recommendation.
And Discovery would be nice, I mean, I don't, because it does run, I mean, these trees are getting pretty, pretty large, so the roots are kinda so I don't know if we'd address that at the same time, I don't, I wouldn't recommend kinda putting it in the same spot, I'd kinda move it out to give those trees a little bit more room to grow, but
Because I have seen people walking the grass, like, trail along 25.
Yeah.
I think they come out on the sidewalk and then walk down, and there's kind of a
And we do have that area identified.
Mm-hmm. Pretty sure, we got a good amount of right-of-way here, because we got a water main right here too, so.
So just adding on.
That was all super helpful.
Two billion dollars.
Yeah.
I keep going, let's go, I got the laser pointers.
So, just touching on the, like, within the park system and without, or outside of the park system too, I think we can certainly separate that out as we're looking at it too, so that it's clear when we're looking at this too, but I noted down the preferences to maintain asphalt within the parks, and then those connections and then those connections leading up to it open to the concrete.
Correct.
Got it. Awesome. So then, just touching on the gap segments then too. We have five that have been identified based on past conversations. Starting with the first one, which is right at this location, connecting from here down to Zion Lutheran. And this is, especially with the new pavilion coming in and the trail improvements within the park. Connecting that in, so right now the sidewalk ends at Zion, Zion Lutheran, and kind of like ramps up into their entry as well. So kind of working through that to extend that and continue that on all the way to the parking lot here. Um...
The only thing with that is, in looking at the future Zion, it would be traveling through their bus drop-off areas and different things. Would we want to not address that right at the moment? Because they are planning future expansion?
I'm not sure when.
I know, I know, I'm not sure when either, but...
We could certainly have conversations with them, see what their preliminary plans are looking like.
I just know that a large section of that, wow.
They do have some master plan work we're looking at, so we can grab that from them as we look at the development.
I just don't want to concrete it and then it all gets torn up and redone anyway.
Right. Great point.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts on that first one?
I would just say it wasn't, we're not, these aren't priority in like any order.
Numbers don't mean anything now, just labeling.
Yeah.
I mean, it needs to be done. I 100% agree that it would be nice, but with their project kind of looming, I don't know that it's a priority at this moment. And that could be 10 years from now. I, without talking to them again and refreshing my memory, I don't know.
Making me bounce all over the map. So then the second one is connecting really the Fieldstone neighborhood with the rest of the community. And I guess I should start too. One of the main goals for some of these gaps were connecting to the regional trail, making sure those options are available. So the second one here is a pretty big one to connect that neighborhood that currently doesn't have a trailer or sidewalk connection. So this is one of the longer ones as well that we're looking at. But really just going along, is that 60 Second there? To connect from where the existing trail ends all the way into the neighborhood. Kind of on both sides of the roadway, we have it shown there, but that can be adjusted as needed.
I was just going to ask, can it just keep following the south side of 60, 60 Second Street there to Fieldstone instead of jumping across right at the...
The sidewalk is up on this side of the street, but I agree with Chad.
Or, yeah, yeah, because you're not going to want to cross.
I would say that would be asphalt.
Yeah, so I view, so that was my next quote. I view that as asphalt. And I would connect with this asphalt trail right here.
Any other thoughts on that one?
No, I mean, that would, that's...
Only reason I say that is, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is if somebody's coming off that 60 Second Street and coming down, you're not dealing with two intersections. If it was all on the one side of the road, that's all. Sorry.
This is one too, we had some discussion on the connection along 25 instead. But ultimately, the discussion led to the more direct route to get into the neighborhood versus having people go up and down. So that's why we went along 60 Second.
I think that's a little bit of a safer area, and I don't think people...
Yeah, people would still walk that way no matter what, I think. We could do both.
They already don't use the bike trail. Still right on the road.
And moving to number three in West Ridge Park there. So this is, again, connecting down to the regional trail into the park system, but ultimately giving access to the whole neighborhood and surrounding streets as well. I can't remember how that line was identified, if that was from...
I don't think we really identified. I think it's just somewhere, that would, just connecting it somewhere. I don't know if that's the best location. Maybe following the alley would be...
I think that's the easement between West Ridge and the, the Dog groomers property up there. I think that's what that is. But yeah, I agree with you, Nikki. It could very well run along the alley as well for...
I think that would be like less disruption to all homes, you know?
Not having random people walk by your back.
Right, right, right by your backyard.
Like I have?
Oh.
You got pine trees, Chad.
He trimmed them up.
So I would say that would be like a, a public comment question is like, you know, I, I feel moving it towards the alley is actually probably...
Running it along the alley?
Yeah.
I would agree, because I mean, then you have less opportunity. And I'm not saying we're a high crime area, but it would give people a pretty shady spot for theft or things to happen between yards and buildings and houses and things back there.
Nick, can you switch to the area off for a second?
Sure.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding it.
Yeah.
Down a little bit more, Nick.
Yeah.
There you go.
So instead of running there, we are up against all those homes.
Yeah.
Yep. I like that better.
But now would that infringe if we ever would decide to add more parking? Should we make it further eastward in?
I, I would say, yeah, make it more of a trail.
Well, just in case you ever add more parking back there, you know, if people, if hot air balloons get really popular, let's say we add, you know, whatever, I, I'm not saying it's going to, but it gives us the space.
Stretch it in this area?
Right.
So you can still have spots here?
Correct. If, if there ever would be in the future, I just...
It's pretty hilly right there, but you'd have to come down.
I come down regardless.
Yeah, but I would say stay away from the, all the homes and move it closer to the alleyway.
Just trying to think of the future.
I like it.
Just two more gaps to touch on. So number four is along Birch there in the Hidden Creek neighborhood. And I think, Nikki, you actually brought this one up as an avid walker in this area. Just, that's a, one of the main thoroughfares in the neighborhood and just establishing some sort of pedestrian connection through there as well. Again, though, this is on the longer side compared...
Yeah, like this isn't, this would be one of those things where I think if you're looking at costs, you know, I don't know if this one was the best option, because you can still do the whole neighborhood.
But there is no existing sidewalk?
No.
Eee.
But I would like to make sure that those residents, that it would be affected on whatever, you know, that they would have input, because that, that's hard to...
Snow clearing and all kinds of stuff for residents that have never had to...
This whole plan isn't to disrupt, well, it's just improve.
Yeah, so this is definitely one that would have the most impact to residents out of all the gaps anyways. The replacement areas will have impacts, but it's replacing...
But yeah, this one I really want community involvement on is, is this something, do we see we really need it? Would people want it? Just because then it's safer for their kids, you know? Are they always driving, biking down Birch? Or are you okay, they can get around using the other trails?
Birch is kind of narrow, isn't it? The road, like if there was two cars on each side, you could only pass one being... They're, they're all the same width.
But I just, my goal for this isn't to add pain to people, it's more to improve.
Yeah, find out what they want.
Yeah, community feedback will be key on this one for sure. And then moving to number five. Yeah, up there. So this is just, there's a missing segment there connecting to the regional trail and across the highway. So just filling in that little segment there to get connected to the trail. So that you don't have to go all the way through the neighborhood to get to it from the other side. And this is the shortest, I think, of all five.
That would make sense.
Anything missing from the five gaps we've identified? Any other key areas?
No, not that I, I'm glad that we've had some more additions to...
Not that I can think of offhand.
All right, we can go back to the presentation. So then, I did throw in just a few existing condition photos, but you guys are familiar with this, so. There we can cut, yeah. I don't think we need to go through them too much, but they're there. And I'll share this PowerPoint too, or Nick has it, so you can send it out. But then just touching on the concrete versus asphalt. Really, this is just up there to just kind of revisit some of this, but also just note that this will feed into the implementation plan and how we put this all together too, and how certain segments will get prioritized. And kind of go into that funding conversation too on what opportunities are available. But as we know, concrete's more expensive, but typically, or has a much longer lifespan on it as well. So averaging around 50 years compared to 20 years for the asphalt segments. So just some notes listed up there, the higher initial cost and then lower maintenance cost. And then some other benefits, it can be replaced panel by panel, and you don't have to do full sections. Not have the noticeable patches. It is more disruptive during construction too, so something to consider for the residents that are in those replacement areas. And then on the asphalt, the lower initial cost, but there is some more maintenance involved with that as well. And spot repairs generally result in some noticeable patches, that sort of thing. It does only add a year of time, so it's less impactful during construction. Anything to add? All right. Can go to the next slide then. This one I'll hand over to you, Nick.
So this is one we identified pretty early on before we got together, is the assessment policy. So this is taken from our assessment policy. I think the focus was on that reconstruction portion, where replacement of sidewalks are assessed at 50% of the abutting property owner, 50% city, city funded. And then trails, Batumina's walkways or bike trails are not assessed, but rather funded by the city. New subdivisions are assessed 100%, but the focus was on that 50%. At the time, we weren't sure if we were going to be going concrete or going asphalt. And if you do go concrete for places that are currently trailed now, does it considered sidewalk? And how the assessment policy plays into that. And so we identified this portion still needs to get addressed, but the direction we received from council early on was to change this to 100% city funded on the reconstruction effort, rather than trying to assess to one side of the street that gets the sidewalk and the other side, if they get lucky enough, doesn't get an assessment and all that fun stuff. So as part of this whole thing, we would get to the assessment policy redoing that. And I think off the top of my head with a special assessment of policy, I think we need to have a public hearing on that. But I really don't think we're going to get a whole lot of people attending when we're saying, well, we're not going to charge you anything for that. So I, we'll probably be safe on that, but...
Yeah, I just didn't, I don't agree with making certain people pay for it when it's used by everybody.
I, I agree with you 100%. That's pretty tough. And then not to have to say if it's asphalt or concrete, while we agreed it's concrete, that's just tough, tough, you know? No.
Good. So then switching gears a little bit. So like I said, this was kind of that first step in kicking off the community engagement piece of it and confirming some of these aspects and gotten some good feedbacks, so that'll definitely be incorporated. But then following this is really getting to, getting the public's feedback and getting set up for that. So we've identified three different opportunities for the public to get engaged in this process. First one being an open house that we would hold in person, we'd have materials available. I did bring a big printout map of the 11 by 17 that you guys have as well, where residents can come and actually draw or leave comments right on the map. And then we'll have some other poster boards with project information, maybe some descriptions on the asphalt versus concrete discussion, that sort of thing too, just to lay it all out there. And then the second piece is an online and interactive web map, which I'll touch on and we can give a little demo on. So this is a tool that Bolton Make has developed called Input ID, and it's customizable to any community and can apply different branding, that sort of thing too. But really, it's just an easy-to-use interactive map where you can go and drop comments on. You can draw lines if you want, so like as part of the gap discussion, maybe someone draws lines saying, you should have a trail segment here type of thing. And then people can interact with those comments too. You can, people can thumb up, thumbs up comments that someone else has made or thumbs down if they disagree. They can reply to them and add their own comments to ones that have already been made. So it's a really useful tool and it can be shared through social media, be placed on the website, that sort of thing. So it's easy for residents to access and fill out. And then we could even have something as part of the open house, maybe a laptop available where people can interact with it that way too, rather than drawing on a printout map. So it's pretty straightforward. We can go into more detail on the map if you want. You can, Nick, if you want, just click on a comment or two. You can see how you, they're broken out into different categories and we can set that up however we want for this effort. And there's the comment there. If you want to try another one, you can see... Maybe, yeah, so that one has two comments on it and a couple thumbs up and one thumbs down type of thing too, so. So this is something that we're planning to move forward with. And we'll get this developed ahead of going out to the public, so it's ready to go. And we'll work through what makes sense to show here, what don't we want to show, that sort of thing. But most likely, it'd be pretty similar to the maps that you guys have in front of you on items that we'd be showing, so. Any initial thoughts, feedback, questions on this tool?
No, I just like the options that people have. Some people might not be able to make an open house meeting, but are still able to participate.
Do you have a timeframe for this, for the open house and putting this up?
Yeah, we haven't set a timeframe yet. It's something that could be ready to go in a matter of a couple weeks. This tool, our GIS team usually likes two weeks to get it all set up and up and running. From there though, it's however long, or can kind of factor in how long we want to give notice to the public and get it out there, newsletters, that sort of thing too, to make sure that, try to get the best attendance that we can, right?
Yeah, no, that's great, right? I just didn't know if this was, you know, a six-month project, so...
In a matter of weeks, we could have a meeting if we wanted to.
Oh, this is all part of the grant, correct? Like, this is the community engagement part, correct? So we've already submitted for the grant? Or we're still, I can't remember the, what we've done.
The Planning Assistance Grant will be through MINDOT. That'll give us more specialized transportation input from their staff, which will then help towards the implementation part. When we're going for some of that stuff, they certainly want to see this, this engagement.
This has to happen before we submit for some of the grant?
The implementation side of things, yeah.
So I would say this would be a, granted, it feels like spring right now. But, you know, except for tomorrow.
I would think you'd want to hit, you'd want to hit this open house piece probably springtime when people are out and about thinking about walking. Again, if it was a normal, if it was last year, it'd still be buried in snow and nobody'd be able to see it, but...
Like April or something like...
Need it when the topic's hot.
Yeah, people are out walking, seeing, let them know, so when they're walking, they can be thinking about it.
When is the pavilion project going to be completed?
Great question.
I just don't know if that was in the same kind of timeframe where if there's going to be an event or something, or it's, maybe it's a way to bring people out to it.
Ah, the pavilion's farther along than it was this time last year, that's for sure. But I don't have an updated finishing, since a lot of it has been warranty work, contractors coming back, because nobody expected even to still be doing this job at this time of year. So I don't have an updated completion schedule yet.
Yeah, I think spring makes a lot of sense, too, when people are out and kind of thinking about this, getting excited to be out again.
Because we could start, not as teasers, but start putting some stuff out, just to say, "Hey, we're working on this, we're going to have an open house, so if you're out walking, you know, take note." You know, and then say that coming soon will be a public open house, an interactive map, you know, those kind of things, and then just say, "Well, nail down closer." But then people can eat, because now people are probably walking and can start making comments, or stop up at City Hall, let us know your thoughts.
But when the time comes to pull the trigger on it, people are aware.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to make that open house, or I'm going to do the online portion.
And the third part that we didn't get to yet, too, was having something available here in this building, too, where if you can't make the open house, or don't want to go online to share feedback, just having something like the map printout, where residents can go and view it, maybe a comment form, a link to the map if someone does want to go and access that interactive map, too.
Yeah.
Allowing residents to kind of do it on their own time, too, if they can't make the open house. I could see that being something that we put in place, maybe right before the open house, too, so we start getting some buzz around it, and someone wants to come in early and share their feedback, they could, too.
Right. To all my, all my walking friends.
So on this piece here, it's kind of just a general, open-ended question of what are we wanting to share with the public? We've touched on it throughout this conversation already, but I just want to open it up to make sure there's nothing else, or there's specific things we're wanting to share, but also touching on what feedback are we looking for specifically, too? So, I called out those replacement areas, the gaps, the asphalt and concrete discussion, but opening up if there's anything else that we want to target with this effort, too, related to the trails and sidewalks.
Well. No, I, I'd like everybody's opinion on different things. I mean, it's going to cut, it's going to be hard with the asphalt concrete, but, and that's going to have to just be a decision for what we feel is best financially and replacement, but it, it's also good to hear people's comments, because you just never know.
Yeah, and I would say location, right? We talked a lot at the West Ridge Park, and, you know, do you do something with the loop? Do you change where it connects with West Ridge? Do you have it come down the houses or the alley? Like, right, like, we identified this as a gap, but where would you like, like, ideally, you know, kind of your interactive map, draw what you would like to see, again, from Fieldstone to, you know, Mare Lutheran? Is it, we want 1 to 25, we want this to cross the street sooner or later? We want to put some, you know, keep it on this side and connect a trail down, you know, kind of open up to more of like, not just, like, are there any more gaps, but is there a better layout or feedback on that?
Can you even show some of those gaps with how the law turns?
Yeah.
Chat, 700 comments on West Ridge.
Anything else?
No.
There's a couple more slides, but it's touching on what we already talked about with the engagement opportunities, so. Yeah, if you just kind of go through it.
This is a pretty good idea.
Yeah, we touched on each of those, so that kind of wraps it up for me, unless there's any questions, or, like I said, next steps will be getting into that community engagement, kind of planning that out, addressing the feedback received here today, obviously, too, and incorporating that into the mapping work, and making sure that we're good to go on that, too. Kind of building out that asphalt versus concrete conversation a bit more, too, and probably strategize a little bit on how we approach that. Are there no other questions, though? I appreciate everyone's time.
I'm assuming we'd have another sidewalk committee meeting to finalize timing and that kind of stuff, that's where that would go?
Yep.
And then come back to council for approval?
Recommendation.
Recommendations, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm, I thought you were, okay, I'm sorry, I'm still leading the meeting, and I apologize for the delay. Number three, public safety funding discussion for fire department small rescue.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. So at the last council meeting, we had a tie vote regarding the purchase of the small rescue. Question to come up there was there was new information that came to light, wanted to bring it back to a work session, discuss it some more, get some more clarification on things, and see about how we want to move forward on that. So with that, I'll toss it back, I think Andy's going to have some updated information for us as well, but if there is any specific questions, we wanted to field on that. One of the discussions is if the small rescue purchase wasn't going to happen, what do we do with the public safety funding as far as how that money gets allocated? Just to touch on that real quick, GASB Statement Number 54 for Cities changes how cities do their fund balances, so pulled this right from the League of Minnesota Cities' Chapter on Finance, and there are these major categories that they can be allocated into, not all of them, but non-spendable, these are funds that are not spendable, inform, long-term receivables, inventories, physical assets, things in that, that nature. What we would be looking at is the next three, which is restricted, committed, and assigned. Restricted is the highest level you can do, that's outside of the non-spendable. These are generally associated with something that is required by law, or a debt issuance, or some other covenant that is placed upon the money that really, as it says, restricts its use. And while the public safety funding has allotted eligible expenses, it doesn't come in the same form as what would be under the GASB rules for restricted. The state says, "You can spend it for these things, but other than that, feel free to spend it on whatever you want," in relation to this, whereas restricted fund balances, this is more, debt service is probably the most famous one for restricted, like when you levy the funds to pay for debt service, it has to go into the specific fund, and it has to be used for payment of the debt service itself. That would be a great example of a restrictive fund. So really, you're down, getting into committed and assigned, and with committed, these funds can be used for a specific purpose. There must be some formal action of the council to commit these funds, and it's usually done by resolution. It says, "We commit these public safety funds to be used for this specific purpose." It could be for the small rescue replacement, or putting it in the CIP to be used towards a future replacement, but you spell out exactly what that funding is going to be used for in there. And then the one below that, assigned, these funds are intended to be used for a specific purpose by council or a designee. So with assigned, it can be by council, but sometimes you can say by motion or resolution, "We're going to designate these funds, and then, but we also give authority to the fire chief, or myself, or Kyle, to shape that a bit more." So it gives a little less restriction on what it could be used for, let's say we designate 110, but you could say, "City Administrator Chief Metzold has the authority with 25,000 of that, if we need to make an emergency repair, you could use it for that purpose as well." So it's really the depth and level you want to put it on at that point. Unassigned, that's just funds available for any purpose that can be used. So, right now, if you just threw it in there, it's unassigned, it would just sit in the CIP, and it could be used for anything, as a designation for that as well. So that's just a general overview, something to think about as we go through our conversations. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Metzold, if he has any additional comments from the last meeting.
Yes, so, stuff that got brought up last meeting of, I guess, reasoning why people felt that we should just kind of wait with purchasing the rescue. Initially, on our CIP, the rescue was set up for replacement a couple of years from now. So a little backstory of why it was, why it's at, why we had that CIP where it's at. Traditionally, we would want to, have always wanted to replace our vehicles at 15 years, what I explained. So, being the truck is 16 years old, why did we not replace it then? Reason why, myself and Bob Carlson, the Assistant Chief, looked at, first of all, our CIP budget at the time, some of big expenditures that we had just got done completing, as far as the new station, but then looked, like I said, at our CIP, and because of past administration, did not, did not put money away for CIP, they were more on the app to bond for trucks and stuff like that. So, our CIP was not very, you know, strong at all, so we felt, let's, we feel we can push it off a little bit to be able to bring that CIP budget up to cover, you know, a little more. So that's kind of the reason why. Myself and Bob Carlson, both being, you know, run businesses ourselves, we run the fire department in the same manner, as like it's our own business, and what is the good, the best for our business, and, you know, that was a financial, I think we should hold off on this a little bit. So, that's why it got pushed to where it was off of that 15-year replacement. So, going forward, I mean, I feel now, when we get this, got this grant, you know, now, now we had money for it. As Nick, Nick then, you know, or we brought up the idea of, okay, well, why don't we replace that? The numbers of how much we were given matched up very close to what that vehicle was going to, you know, run. Now, why don't we go ahead and purchase this? It would be closer to that timeline that we were expecting, or would primary, or prefer to be at. And then, the other thing is, we're not looking to replace and get rid of that truck. We're looking at to repurpose it. One thing else to, you know, put into is, I talked to other departments around the area of when they replace trucks, particularly smaller vehicles like this, whether it is a small rescue, whether it is a duty truck, or a command vehicle, or something like that. Spoke with Watertown, Watertown, their light rescue that they use like that, they replace at 10 years. Spoke with Waconia, Waconia did the same, or does the same thing, replaces at 10 years. I spoke with Cologne, they're kind of, just got kind of a light vehicle before they had ran more, just a heavy rescue for their medical calls, but had recently got something, asked when they, you know, were, would be then looking to replace that in the future, and he felt that 15 years. I also reached out to St. Bonnie, and St. Bonnie was at 20 years. So, looking at that, a number of other, you know, departments are replacing theirs at 10, you know, some at Cologne feel, you know, was feeling 15, and I guess that's, it lines up with what a lot of other departments are doing to, for the most part. I guess then, the thing is, we're not looking to just replace that truck and get rid of that truck, we're planning on repurposing it. So, we would keep our, our rescue, turning it into a, a command vehicle. What that kind of looks like would be, first officer that gets to the station is going to jump into that and go right away, before the other trucks get in and, you know, fill up the truck totally, but that first officer can get on scene as soon as we can, to be able to make some decisions in truck placement. If we need to get more people started, different things like that, that make it crucial, we can get a little bit of head start, so we can place that apparatus in the right location right away, instead of coming in and finding out that, oh, boy, we should have maybe backed down the driveway instead of drove in, or things like that. Now, that takes extra time to have to rearrange that, so that first officer coming in can make some of those quick decisions prior to the truck getting on scene. And so, it's, like I said, it's, this grant that was given is a public safety grant, is given to the cities basically to improve public safety now. They're not giving that money to, here, go ahead, put it away in your CIP to pay for something down the road, it's to improve public safety now. So, I really question, what is the, the purpose, or the reasoning behind waiting to purchase that truck, you know, down the road? What, what financial, or what benefit is it to this city that would put off purchasing it now?
Do a lot of other surrounding departments have command vehicles and font, like, is that, is it kind of, I know Channing Hossen's had one for a long time, but like, some of the smaller, like Watertown, like this is a newer.
Yeah, so the only departments in Carver County that do not have a command vehicle are going to be us, New Germany, and Hamburg.
And how many calls a year do you think the command vehicle would be used?
So, every fire, every accident is, you know, for sure, it's going to go out first on. And then, the other, where it would go is on a, a medical scene where we would have somebody, a cardiac arrest or something like that, we'll end up running two trucks, two, so we would utilize that truck on going to that. So, that, those type of calls throughout the year, I would say, I don't know, probably 25 calls a year or something.
And so, I know, right, we talked about the miles on the vehicle, that was a big one, right? It's got, I don't know, 12, 17, like. So, do we look at hours, like, because again, mayor's not that big? Like, you could drive the city a lot of times before you hit 12,000 miles, right? But if it's, like, if you look at it, like, do you, is it a fair comparison to go, but it runs 300,000 hours, or, you know, 100,000 hours, which equates to X miles? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, so, it is definitely not the mileage that is, you know, making us look at, boy, it needs to be replaced. It is the age. I would say many people don't drive, you know, 15-plus-year, you know, vehicles around the area, but we're expecting to have our mainline vehicle that we need to rely on, you know? It's just, yeah, like I said, merely the age, the technology, I mean, anything, all of that, that, you know, how that all changes. You know, so it's, it's not mileage, you know, it's, it's merely age, I think, that, you know, after, you know, age, you know, things just not so much where else. not so much where, I'll put can be electronic, you know, everything is electronical on vehicles and stuff like that. That stuff goes bad, you know, electronics in your vehicles. You know, it's not the mileage that's hurting it, it's the age and, you know, is what you end up having those types of issues with. So, you know, and again, we're not going to replace the truck and grid. If we want to repurpose that truck.
Is this the first small rescue that mayor has had?
Yes, so prior to this truck, we ran with what we call our heavy rescue. So it was a big, big truck that we were out trying to run these. And we went to this small, small rescue to just be more efficient with. You were able to get to calls, you know, quicker, maneuver better, you know, and stuff like that. Instead of having to drive a great big truck around to those medicals. So that is the reason we went to using that small rescue for it.
I would say Andy's right with age and it's not necessarily miles, even with public works equipment. I mean, our dump truck in 20 years when, or 18, 17 years now, when we traded off or, you know, get rid of it, might only have about 60,000 miles on it, if that. So, and same with the 550 when that's through rotation and everything else. A lot of these public works vehicles, I mean, 50,000 is what they get, but it's the purpose of what they're being used for, you know. Snow block, fire is a little different, but you're turning, you're braking, you're, the engine's idling. I think that's actually a pretty big one.
It stays running the entire time, it's on scene.
So, I mean, that's kind of, it's not, you know, it's wear and tear. I mean, and it's significant enough to.
And you'd be making changes to how the, our current small rescue works to what you're doing now? Like things that you're like, okay, we don't like that, this is more efficient.
Yeah, so a lot of, where what we're kind of specking out is going to be a very, very similar to what we currently have with, you know, there's a, there's a few things, you know, the one we have, a lot of the latches have been kind of a pain in the butt and aren't working always where we gotta get stuck, you know, where they won't shut and we gotta kind of, you know, fix the latches. And so going to a different type of service body with a little better latches and stuff. Otherwise, a lot of the things are very similar. We've looked at other, other people's small rescues and felt the way we have our setup is what does work best for us.
And Nick, is there a timeframe that this money needs to be used by?
The state did not put an end date on when it needs to be used by.
And they, the only specification from the state was public safety.
Public safety, there was a list of items it was eligible for. As it relates to mayor specific, it really only falls into two categories. One, the fire department for equipment use, or it could be used to pay the law enforcement contract. But get, as Andy alluded to, the state of our fire department CIP and where we want to go with it is to not have to bond for vehicles in the future. We don't have to pay Lers, you know, they do great work. Pay them to issue debt and then pay interest on it. We would like to have that fully funded and we're getting there. So having, knowing that the small rescue is coming up in a couple of years when the state funding came down, I just kind of went, oh, these two match up really well. So when you said it was 16 years old, I said, well, in my experience with fire departments, it's that, you know, 15, 20-year mark, you're looking at replacing equipment. Again, it varies, Waconia and Watertown do it sooner, some do a little later. But we're in that ballpark where it could be replaced. And when Andy talked about, well, the reason we push, we're pushing it off to 16, 17, 18 years is that the CIP wasn't where it needed to be. When the state funding came through, just kind of made sense to fall in line with it.
And with the things the way they are, I'm sure prices will only continue to rise.
As a comparison, I think it's the same type of truck that we got for public works. Well, yours is a four door, so it's a little bit more, but I helped Bob get the state bid numbers and we paid 35,000 for our truck and it went up to 40,000. We purchased ours in 2019. So it's kind of put a bit in the last four years here, four, five years.
So, yeah, I mean, I just, I, I, I cannot see, somebody can point it out to me that the benefit of the city holding off on purchasing that when we are, we have been given that money to spend on this. Now, we didn't, weren't given that money, you know, and we needed to wait till that fund built up. Makes sense, but we're, we're given some money to do it. What benefit does it have to the city to hold off onto it? I see the benefit of doing it now and, you know, providing better public service, which was that what that grant was issued for, to improve public safety.
And so is it fully decided that the current small rescue will become a command vehicle?
In the discussions of our officers, that is what our plans would be, correct.
Anybody have any further discussion on this? So then now next steps would be, would be bringing it back for?
So that's the direction we would like from council staff is do we want to bring it back to vote on it once again? Or are we looking at the path of designating the funds for future use is where we're at?
My vote hasn't changed, so, from my previous vote on the discussion, so.
Same.
And so Andy, I think you, can we walk through maybe the CIP and the trucks as they're coming?
Sure.
I think you said the next one was like four or five years.
Beyond than that rescue, the next would be 2030.
All right, let me blow this up a little bit here so we can all see. So here is the equipment that we have listed, small rescue, turnout gear, helmets, the 2000 engine, extrication tools, radios, the side-by-side SCBA equipment, the heavy rescue, the 2005 tanker is what we have here. So how the CIP work is we have an I, about a year to replace in here. Expected life we list here. And then down here, the starting fund balance of where we're at, the levy that goes in a fire contract funding, and this changes in the future, but that's a different discussion we'll have. And then down here is our ending fund balance. Then in here is where the anticipated purchase would be at this time. So the next major purchase we're looking at is down the road in 2029. And that would be for the helmets, the 2000 engine, extrication tools, and then also SCBA equipment as well is where we're looking at that. So we're building up towards that so that we can have enough funding in there to make that in 2029. You do see money left over in there, but as we go down the line, we get to 2032, which is where we're looking at the heavy rescue being replaced. And when we get to that, then our fund balance drops to 35,000 there. So from there on out, it's building it back up. We have another one here, 2034 anticipated. And that was for the 2005 tanker. Again, drops, drops our fund balance back down. And then after that, we start building it back up again.
So if we use these funds, there'd be another $100,000 in that account, correct?
So in this formulation, I had it tossed in here under CIP. Here's 103, this represents that public safety funding. Offset, that's right there. That's where we toss it in. So this funding scenario takes into account that, that the state funding goes towards the small rescue. Now, this is just in general, happens 25 or 26. Again, the state funding would go towards that amount.
So the fund balance wouldn't go up by an additional 100,000, it's already calculated with it in there.
So it used to, the small rescue used to be in what year, 2026, we think?
Well, it would have been 2023 was when it was. And we pushed it off to, well, he's got it at 2024. I think it was, I think I last prior to this, we had it at 2020. Yeah, must have been 2026.
And so the other, like the engine and the heavy rescue and the tanker, those go for more like 30 years? Is that, am I reading that right?
You are reading it right. So we keep those trucks for 30 years. And I'm, so that 2000 engine, right now, currently I've got a, an engine that's a 2000 engine and one that's a 2015. So the 2015 is our mainline engine that we take out. The 20, the 2000 is our backup truck. So every 15 years, then we replace an engine, put that to our mainline engine. That other one goes, you know, to our backup engine. So it's a mainline engine for that first 15 years and then that. So it's being replaced, we keep it for 30 years, but it is our mainline for 2015.
So this isn't all the equipment, this is just what, like, because again, in 2029, when you replace the 20, the 2000 engine, then you'll put on there the 2015 engine to be replaced in 20.
2020, yeah, 45.
Holy cow, that's crazy. Sorry. Right, okay, but that, that, because I'm like, wait a second, like, but I understand now.
Yeah, just for fun.
Oh, geez.
I'll still be working. I got it out to 26 years or so, so.
Oh, my gosh.
That'll be for a future city administration.
It might be, maybe I'm closer retired.
Flying fire trucks by then.
So, yeah, I, right now, we.
So actually it's more ideal to do it now than to wait because we've got a lot of upcoming, like the turnout gear in 2027, and I know we've, we, we were surprised with our turnout gear 10 years ago. And then we put it into the CIP.
Didn't we just replace a bunch of that?
So it's good for 10 years.
Okay.
So, yeah, it was replaced in 2017.
So again, we have, you have multiple sets.
Yeah, so, so we have, so 30 sets of gear. We've, you know, we typically run full staff as 30 members.
Okay.
So that's why I've got it set up 30 sets. But NFPA says, you know, it should be replaced at 10 years, your structural gear.
But haven't we replaced, didn't we use some COVID money or something?
We had gotten some, yes, so recently we did get some wildland fire equip, or gear that was basically a shell that is not as heavy as the rest of our gear is that we do for structural firefighting. So that stuff is, it's very heavy and very hot, wearing it. So for grass fires or a car extrications or stuff like that, we had recently with some of that COVID money, purchased some what they call wildland gear.
Okay, and so do we need to get that, a replacement for those on here?
So, yeah, I mean, that doesn't fall quite is because it's not structural gear under that same NFPA guideline of replacing that 10 years. So we'll be able to push that out a little further.
Yeah.
So the one thing that is not on there is like our grass rigs. So for instance, right now, we have a, leave it as a 1986 Humvee through the DNR that, you know, we got, you know, like I said, through the DNR that we had did some modifications to it, you know, for use for, you know, firefighting. Just recently did a few updates with it and stuff, so, but that is a 1986 truck. We also have a 1960, 1970 maybe, Gamma Goat, so it's a six-ruled, another DNR truck that we use for grass fires now. Especially that Gamma Goat has been starting to become a lot of maintenance, you know, things. So soon we'll want to, you know, probably look at updating, you know, that piece of equipment. The, our thoughts to it are as we, if we were to go ahead and replace this rescue, using the old rescue for, for a time being as a command vehicle for a while to basically see how beneficial it is for us and how much do we use it and stuff. In the thoughts of, as city gets bigger, as, you know, things, our, our call rate has gone up. So as we see that and it makes more sense to, you know, that we're going to be using that command vehicle more and stuff, may we then at that point look to get a different, more specific type command vehicle and then repurposing that truck and putting a skid unit or grass unit on it using that chassis yet to replace one of those, you know, older vehicles. You know, the, so we've got some, or ideas of what we will end up using that, you know, through the life of still keeping that truck for, you know, whether it's another five, 10, 15 years. But we have got some, you know, ideas of still keeping that and utilizing it, not just, like I said, replacing.
And so when you talk about, right, five years or, you know, the community's growing and you look for a command vehicle specifically, that's going to be in that 100,000 range, do you think? I mean, and I know you can't.
So I would say most, most cities right now, what they are using for a command vehicle is, most of them are using some sort of an SUV. So an SUV with then putting some lights and stuff like that on it, sirens outfitting at that. So you're going to be under $100,000, you know, and it's not to say we can't pick up a, a used vehicle from, you know, one of the big city departments. I know a few of the departments in the county has, has done that. You know, some of the big city departments replace them every five years or something like that. You know, so that would be something that we would look at, at, you know, at the time, you know. If it is something that, yeah, hey, we do use this or, you know, does it, you know, make sense that somebody actually has that command vehicle with them at all times, you know, or, you know, and stuff? somebody actually has that command vehicle with them at all times, you know, or, you know, and stuff. So as we would get busier, it would be something that we would look at, so.
So this is kind of like a good test run to see how much you actually use it to see, but we have other options for it if that's not the route we feel is necessary.
And then it looks like, I mean, realistically, if you put this in at 2024, then it's every five years, you're just kind of on that rotation. It's just, it's going to get big, and then it comes down a little bit, and then it'll be a little bit, and then it'll be bit, like, kind of an every five years rotation.
Better, you know, spread out of our bigger expenditures, if we kind of looked at doing it now versus, you know, then, otherwise it could, you know, we wait a few years, now it's going to bunch up some of those expenditures. And like I said, I just, I don't see the, with being, you know, granted that money right now, what, what benefit is it to the city by holding on to it, not doing that now? I don't, I don't see a benefit. I only see it costing us more money.
And so, right, when I look at the CIP fund, when you guys made the decision, was there not 800,000 in there? Like, I know previously, right, but when I look at this and go, you had 800,000, this is going to cost you 100,000. Why did, why did you think it was okay to push it two years? Do you like to see it at a million? Is there somewhere that it should sit? Like, I mean, I look at it and go, if you had 800,000, why wouldn't we have spent 100,000?
I think the philosophy all goes back to, we don't want to bond for the future. That's, that's
To answer your question, no, there wasn't 800,000.
Okay.
We have, so changed a little bit as tried to put, well, Nick has done a good job to, you know, help get to our CIP back to where it should be.
Yeah.
Because we weren't putting enough money away. You know, I had, I knew as people were talking about, you know, engines and other, you know, cities, what these trucks were starting to cost. I'm like, oh boy, we're going to have to make sure CP, CIP is in line, because if I go there and we don't have any money, and we got to get a million dollar truck, they're going to be what?
Right. That's what happened with our turnout gear, is we all of a sudden was like, we need to replace them now.
Yeah.
And then that's when we started budgeting, you know, over 10 years, we did 10,000. I remember this, these conversations when we were doing budgeting. And now we've just gotten better with more, with the budgeting.
Yeah, but how, I mean, I guess I'm struggling with how we have 800,000 with Nick being here for one, I mean, we didn't
So yeah, that's built up over time. So the starting fund balance in there, that's been built up over time. But I think it still goes back to me here or not here, we're going to get the budget in order, but you're still looking at some of these expenses down the line. And if it still had been 100,000 a year, when you hit this math in place or otherwise, there would have been a deficit for sure, especially with the purchase of the small rescue.
Just started increasing that.
So it's, it was been 100,000 next year, looking at going up, and then this is where we see some structural changes potentially to our contracts. To help
You, prior to, we weren't putting 100,000 away, and I don't know when we just started kind of doing that. I don't know how
Had to be in the last couple of years.
Yeah.
It was prior to me, but
Around the time when we kind of said we were going to push back is when we kind of pushed that we need to be putting more in. So back when we, you know, there wasn't that kind of money in it, you know, there was, there was some, was there 100,000? Yes, there was. But I didn't want to deplete it at that point.
Yeah.
So I've been wanting to let it build up.
And again, in your mind, you're going, I have 800,000, I have a million dollar rig coming up. So, okay, that helps. Thank you. Like,
I do think the previous administrator, we did that long-term plan of some sort.
It was
Start putting money away.
Yes.
So we did, like I said,
for like Public Works Building and all that, that was kind of when the ball got rolling, I think, and that, I think is where
I think that's about that 2020 time period that I think Abdal got involved at that point and
Right. So that's how we get the payloader and the dump truck, or I think we purchased dump truck, but then after that, that's kind of how things started rolling, I guess.
And so, how accurate do we think those numbers are? I mean, we talk of, like, the cost, right? So like a 2032 heavy rescue. And when do we update these?
So, I'll field that one. So how this spreadsheet is built, I've built in an inflation factor. Right now, the inflationary factor is 3% on this. So we know what these things cost today because other departments have purchased them and Andy's done that research for me. So I take those base costs, then we put an inflationary factor on it. The inflationary factor is calculated down here, and then this top part just yanks the number from below, which has the inflationary factor as part of it. So we anticipate in 2039, the SCBA will be this. The nice part about having this documented house is we can review this every year. So is 3% right? Is it too high? Is it too low? What's the equipment actually doing? So we can keep this up to speed. And then as we keep this up to speed and we see what things are doing, we then adjust the CIP numbers to make sure we're hitting targets.
Yeah, because look, with your inflation rate, that 950 today is probably going to be 1.1 million.
Yeah, so this is the base cost here, we figured they would, would be, and then just, it inflations out.
That's perfect. That helps a ton, because I'm like, again, if these were numbers from three years ago, we're already looking at
We're already behind.
Yep. So this is something, right, that whether Andy finds a new going rate and we can
I will, I have, in the past, kind of, once a year, has, I've updated the, the CIP.
Okay.
So I've looked at what are, you know, average costs now, if we were to purchase them, we will plug those in, and then, you know, as, you know, we, we would see what, okay, what did it go up this past year? You know, so does that make sense?
That's perfect. Good.
And you also do look for grants and other things. So we, we budget like we're going to, so like the small rescue, like, there is a grant that we can use to pay for it and take some of that relief from the taxpayers.
And we looked at that for engines, SCBA, anything, because there are fire, fire equipment grants out there, there certainly are. They are competitive, you don't, aren't guaranteed, so the idea is we don't want to depend on a grant and then go, oops, we didn't get it.
Yeah.
So are your numbers still good then for the small rescue, or have they gone up now?
I, I have not spoken to them since they gave them to me last, so. Hoping, but I can't say that for sure.
I'll say we bring it back.
So if there's no other questions, I just want to make sure we're wrapping up in a timely fashion. So what it came backwards, and not to throw this on you, Peggy. It's not the intent at all.
That's all right. I knew it was coming, because they already said I'm not changing my vote, so. Um, yeah, right, like, I appreciate the additional information. I felt a little, I don't know, I, I need a little bit more time, I think, to process some of these bigger expenditures, like, I know Andy, you've probably talked about this for six months, and you're like, I don't know what the big deal is, but I haven't. I don't see the numbers every day. Yes, I just drove to South Dakota and bought a car, but I didn't do that from Friday to today, right? Like, I just, like, some of these, and again, it's like, I get it, but trying to keep all the numbers together, and then, like, for me, it's about 11,000 miles or 15,000, I'm like, that's nothing, right? Like, and again, but listening to, right, I went home and my husband's like, what the hell's wrong with you? Like, it's not about miles, it's about hours. Like, I mean, I don't know, I drive a car, like.
I do want to take some of the blame on this one, because we knew we were getting the public safety dollars. I'd been talking with Andy about it. My mind is like, oh, it matches, it makes sense. I should have brought this to a workshop far sooner so we could have begun the conversation, so we didn't have to end up here with kind of like, whoops, we had to pump the brakes on it, to make sure we really want, know what we want to do. So if I had come to council a bit sooner on a workshop, had two, three workshops ahead of time to discuss this, could have probably avoided quite a bit, but so, I want to take my share of the blame on that one.
I think some of these bigger purchases should be done when, when everybody is available to be part of the conversation too. And it's hard, because I know going into March, we're a little spotty on who's here, and especially with Derek being gone, I just think some of these bigger ones always are more important, that everybody has a say in the conversation.
Yeah, and I do like Nick, right? Like, I would like to see some of these bigger purchases, whether it be, I mean, not a $9,000 pump, you know, but, you know.
I only have spending authority up to 5,000.
But I, I'm good with doing that, like, you know, on a whim. But, you know, when there's a couple of numbers in front of the comma, maybe a workshop, if we have time. I understand there's emergencies and, and that's happened, right? But just having a, you know, if we can get it into a workshop, have the conversations, and then, right, again, with as much information as we can. Because, right, again, I'll take full, like, learning lesson for me, I was like, 12,000 miles, that's nothing, like, but, again, I'm, I work in an office, I don't do this, so, right?
But this was really helpful to see the, the play out of how all the numbers and why this is actually a really big win for the city, is that it's taking out a big item purchase, that's, that will be covered fully by grant money.
And I like the five-year split.
Yeah, and now
You just know every five years.
There's going to be some sort of big, bigger purchase. And the next big one is actually, well, for vehicles, is that engine, and that's what, like, the most expensive vehicle.
I guess, yeah, I mean, the little frustration I had, I mean, we, we had this kind of at, at workshop, we, we discussed it at workshop prior to the council, and no one really questioned any of it. It, it felt like it was going to be kind of a a slam dunk that everybody felt, oh, that was a good expenditure, or, you know, use of that, that money, and then it goes to that council at where it got shot down. It's like, wow, wait a minute, what did I, what did I miss there? Why didn't anybody even question this somewhat a little more before even, you know, so that's kind of what was frustrating. And like I said, myself, the Assistant Chief, Bob Carlson, we both run businesses, and we don't run this, or run the fire department any different, and we run our own businesses. Where we don't make purchases, we don't make expenditures, just because we do them for a reason. We do them, you know, in timely fashions to make sure that we do have good, you know, good equipment, you know, I'll take, we, we do have some very nice equipment, we take pride in that, we, but it is about, you know, getting my firemen home safely. So providing them with the best equipment that we can, you know, for their safety and for the public safety is, is kind of my number one goal, but not doing it in a unreasonable fashion, fiscally responsible, because I'm a taxpayer too. But it's something that we take a very lot of pride in the department and trying to make it, you know, good, you know, so.
Well, again, for me, it was, right, my ignorance on the mileage, and if we thought we could wait, just because we got the money, doesn't make sense. So, but I think, right, I feel more comfortable seeing these numbers and the additional conversations.
So just a quick straw poll, what would we like to do as action for the next council meeting, the agenda item itself? Do we want to bring it back for another vote for purchase? Or are we looking at committing the funds to a future year for its replacement?
Well, I would recommend bringing it back to the next, or to a council meeting for review again.
Chad?
I would agree, I guess, pending Andy speaking to him and seeing if our quote is still good.
Peggy?
Yeah, I mean, right, we're not going to have a full council, I don't think, in March. So I don't know what that looks like. But
Bringing it back for, I, I just want, make sure I have clarification, because I don't want to run into another split vote and, and things fail again. I just want to know
If there's three people here, two have to vote yes, correct?
Correct.
So, yes, I think we should bring it back for a vote.
Okay, I will have that at the next council meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
And that's it, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Not a workshop.
Oh.